Now call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Council Farino to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The conclusion may stand in for one moment because we lost a very important member of our community just yesterday, and it's sad to announce, but I'd ask for a moment of silence for Maureen Delahanty. Of course, she's a sister of our acting town manager and chief of police. She's a justice of the peace here in Winthrop, and she's been very active in the community for years. So please a moment of silence for Maureen Delahanty. Okay, thank you. Give me a second. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the November ninth, 2021, meeting.
Second.
Motion by Council Farino, seconded by Council Honan. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Are there any amendments? Are there any additions, cancellations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Jarro?
Yes.
Council Plakat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Honan?
I'm staying.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
The minutes are approved. All right, moving on to general information and recommendations. As you all know, that recently we have appointed a new fire chief in the form of Scott Wiley. Because he became the new chief, it became some openings up the line in our fire department. So I'd like to call on Chief Wiley tonight to make a presentation. I believe he has some great news for some of our people in town.
Good evening, thank you, Council President Boncory, Vice President Christopher, members of the council. Before we begin, on behalf of the entire Winthrop Fire Department, I would like to extend our sincere condolences to the entire Delahanty family. Our thoughts and prayers are with you during this extremely difficult time. We're here this evening to swear in one new member of the Winthrop Fire Department and to acknowledge the promotion of three other members. I would like to begin with the newest member of the Winthrop Fire Department, probationary firefighter Devon Radka. Last week, probationary firefighter Radka graduated from Massachusetts Firefighting Academy in Stowe. Probationary firefighter Radka was appointed to the department in August of 2021. Pining firefighter Radka is his mother, retired Winthrop Police Department Sergeant Judy Radka.
Could you repeat after me?
Okay.
I, Devon Radka.
Aye, Devon Radka.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts against all enemies.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts against all enemies.
Both foreign and domestic.
Both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as firefighter of the Winthrop Fire Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as firefighter of the Winthrop Fire Department.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Could you sign your date? Eleven twenty-three. Thank you. Congrats. You're making a big book. You can't get out.
Congratulations, firefighter Radka, welcome to the department. Next, I would like to bring up Lieutenant Eric Cusack. Lieutenant Cusack was appointed to the department in November of 2014, was promoted to lieutenant in October of 2021. Lieutenant Cusack is currently assigned as the company officer of engine one group four. Lieutenant Cusack is joined by his wife Mary.
Ready? I, Eric Cusack.
I, Eric Cusack.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as fire lieutenant of the Winthrop Fire Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a fire lieutenant of the Winthrop Fire Department.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Cusack. Next, I would like to bring up Captain David Higginbotham. Captain Higginbotham was appointed to the department in May of 2018, promoted to lieutenant in March of 2020, promoted to captain in October of 21. Captain Higginbotham is currently assigned as the ship commander of group two. Captain Higginbotham is joined by his fiancee Talia and their son Kayden. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize Captain Higginbotham's grandmother, who is with us, Mrs. David Higginbotham, the wife of former chief David Higginbotham, who I had the pleasure of working for.
Y'all set? Y'all set? All right, let's go. I, David Higginbotham.
I, David Higginbotham.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Both foreign and domestic.
Both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as fire captain of the Winthrop Fire Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as fire captain of the Winthrop Fire Department.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
He's happy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Captain Higginbotham. Lastly, I would like to bring up Captain Stephen Calandra. Captain Calandra was appointed to the department in February of 2006, promoted to lieutenant in February of 2012, promoted to captain in 2017, and promoted to administrative officer in October of 21. Captain Calandra is currently assigned as the administrative officer, fire prevention officer. Joining Captain Calandra is his wife Cheryl.
I, Stephen Calandra.
I, Stephen Calandra.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts against all enemies.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts against all enemies.
Both foreign and domestic.
Both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as administrator officer of the Winthrop Fire Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as administrative officer of the Winthrop Fire Department.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, Council.
Thank you very much, Council President Boncory, Vice President Christopher, members of the council for indulging us this evening. Congratulations to the members appointed and promoted, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Wiley, and I also want to congratulate the inductees and the people being promoted. It is an outstanding job that you do. And I also like to point out for people that can't see it on the Zoom, but we have a whole contingency of our finest firemen here in support of these officers and men coming onto the department. I want to thank you all for your service. You are the front line for this town of Winthrop. We're thankful for your service as firemen, as firefighters. I'm going to take a two-minute recess because I'm sure not all of you want to sit through the rest of the meeting. So you're welcome to leave during the recess, but you're also welcome to stay. All right, do we have any participants on?
It's going to take them a minute to dial.
Steve Roach? Steve's on. That's it right now, it's just Steve.
I just got an email from Robbie Power saying that he's waiting for the Zoom.
It's the new number.
Okay.
He needs the new number.
Okay.
And they can get the new number?
On the web.
The new number's on the web right now?
On the web right now, yep.
All right, is it, are we on WCAT?
Yes, we are, yep.
Okay.
On WCAT.
All right, would you give me that number one more time?
Eight-three-nine.
Number is, to join us is eight-three-nine.
Six-two-seven-one.
Six-two-seven-one.
Two-six-three-eight.
Two-six-three-eight. I see one or two people that have come on. Usually we have many more. I want to make sure that this is open and transparent.
Yep, it is open, yep.
Okay. All right. If anybody at home is having a problem, give one of us a call, and we'll text you the numbers. Moving on, we're still under general information and recommendations. I just want to make a couple of announcements on the general information, and that is there will be another VAX clinic on December fourth for students between the ages of five and 12. And this is our second VAX clinic for young people. Meredith will probably tell you more about it under the Town Managers' Report, but it is set for December fourth. Also, ballots are in for the Senate election, the special election. Democratic ballots have arrived today. Republican ballots have not arrived because there is no one on the Republican ballot at the present time. There will be Republican ballots coming, but if you are interested in voting early, you can pick up a Democratic ballot now and vote, early voting. Moving on, we have our three public hearings. The first public hearing is a public hearing on the town council's vote to authorize the town of Winthrop to accept $449,825 in the form of a grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Bureau of Community Health and Prevention. Okay, the meeting is now open. Is there any discussion? Yes, Chairman of the Board of Health, William Smith.
Hi, as the council president said, I'm Bill Schmidt, Chair of the Board of Health. I just wanted to recommend this grant. It's been tremendous work done by Meredith to secure this. I understand, I think we're only one of three or four towns in the Commonwealth, particularly one of this size. I think we're going to be able to hire several people on substance abuse prevention, so it's just a terrific thing, and obviously you should support it, and Meredith's done a great job. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else on the council that wants to be heard on this? Council Farino?
Yes, Council President, Finance Committee met last night, and we opted to table this until we had further information and details, and we spoke to Meredith about it, and so we're going to put it on the next meeting, next finance meeting, to get those answers.
Okay, so the recommendation out of the Finance Committee?
There's no recommendation. We moved to table it for another meeting.
But your recommendation is to table it, is what we're getting to. Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor outside of the committee in the public?
I'll just, I'll just say, I agree with the decision to table it based on finding out of the financial terms, but, Ms. Bill, I plan on voting for it when it does come out of committee.
Anyone else wishes to be heard? Not, I will close this public hearing, and we will bring the issue up under Old Business. Hearing is closed. Next, there's a motion for public hearing to appropriate $50,000 from the sale of town property fund to a special article for the purpose of real estate consulting services related to the sale of the old middle school property. Okay? Is there anyone proposing this motion that wishes to be heard during the public hearing? Did the Finance Committee discuss this?
Yes, we did, and we opted to table it till the next meeting.
We need more information.
For more information.
Again, okay, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on it? Cameron Chavez?
Cameron Chavez, please, too. I was just going to say, too, I didn't know if this was related to the RFP or to what actually the use is going to be for the, I guess that was my question. Now that they've tabled it, I can hold off.
I can maybe touch on that a bit. So it's our understanding, and we're still waiting for more information, that this did have to do with consulting for the RFP, but we need more information to make a decision.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Okay. Council Plakat?
What is the sale of town property fund? Is that a line item in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other people that want to speak on this, for or against it? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the appropriation of the $50,000, and we'll take the issue up under Old Business, where I guess there will be a recommendation on the table. Hearing is closed. It will now open up a public hearing on tax classification for fiscal year 22. Alan Roach, I see that you guys are, are you presenting this?
Well, not officially, no. I'm not sure if Steve is on Zoom.
Is Steve Roach joining us on Zoom?
Yes.
We did discuss it, Phil, and assessors is in favor of the single tax rate. Historically, it's always been a single rate, and so we recommend the single rate, tax rate.
All right. Is there a motion coming before us on this under New Business? There is. So is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this during the public hearing?
The Finance Committee met also on this last night, and we voted to table it till the next meeting, so we could sit down with the assessors and have a discussion on this motion.
Okay, so we're tabling all three of the things that were sent to the Finance Committee? All right, is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this? Anyone in the public?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, is that Steve Roach?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, Steve.
I'm sorry, we've had some serious technical difficulties, but, so, I'm hoping we have enough information, Council, tonight, to move it to the next hearing for a vote. We have the interim year adjustment, and we have the new growth. So basically, this hearing will be for the classification hearing to keep the residential classification at a single rate as endorsed unanimously by the Board of Assessors. So are we able to go, are we able to go forward?
We're, well, it's on for New Business, so it could be put off again till the next meeting, but it can't be voted on tonight either way, because it hasn't been on before.
Here's the problem. If it waits till the next meeting, and we're running into an issue with the processing of the tax bills and of the packing, you know what? I hate to say this, but there's been a problem with some of the numbers getting into the system. We currently have all the numbers together now, where I believe that we have good enough numbers to get to the classification hearing, but to get to the tax rate, it would be ready for next time. So it's my hope that we can, you know, hear this tonight and then be able to vote at the next meeting. I could give you a lot of information right now.
Okay.
I'd like to wait for the president of the Finance Committee, or the chair, excuse me, the chair of the Finance Committee, until he's here that we could decide that together, because it was tabled.
Okay. All right, but this is, this is still a public hearing on it. Steve, do you want to give us information now, or do you want to wait till our next meeting, when it will probably be voted on and come in with your usual charts and so on?
Okay, let me ask you this. So if it waits till, is it the seventh, the next hearing?
It is the seventh, December seventh.
Next town looking?
Yes.
Would you be able to, and sign off, so that Terry could sign off on behalf of the town, so that we could have the tax rate? Otherwise, if we wait, and then, if we wait till the seventh, and then two weeks after that, the town is in trouble.
Oh, the problem, you're going to get the tax bills in the mail.
Yeah.
The first of the year.
It should be able to be done on the seventh without a problem.
Okay.
Because it's on for the first time tonight, so it will come forward on the seventh, and I don't see why we can't, I'll prove it on the seventh to get the bills up, you know, by the eighth or ninth.
Oh, well, I have, okay, so I have a question scheduled with the folks that we work with to do the billing, but I just want to make sure procedurally that this works, where, you know, so here we are, tonight, on the 23rd, is it half a week, you know, for the next hearing to be voted upon, or it's going to be heard and then voted upon the same night? I'm not sure how that goes procedurally.
No, we've had the public hearing now, so we don't have to have another public hearing. But it's on for New Business, and according to our chart, and nothing that is on for New Business can be voted the same night it comes on for New Business. It has to go till the seventh, on the seventh it can be voted.
Okay.
All right?
All right, good. Well, I have to say, we have some good news in regards to the growth. We have the high, the second highest new growth in all in 10 years, so that's good for the town. But I understand the council would like more information on, you know, what's going on, and, you know, the actual budget, on how much is to be raised in taxes and all that, so that's, that's where we're at right now. So if we, yes, if we can go to the seventh, and then it would be Old Business, and then you folks can hear the presentation and then vote, that'd be great.
Correct. Okay, Steve, so could you, you could be with the Finance Committee at the next meeting, give them the information so that we move forward. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Anyone else wishes to be heard? Anyone else wishes to be heard on the fiscal year tax classification? Hearing none, see no one else, no other hands? That's on the hand up there, is that on the screen?
Nope.
That's on the hand, it's.
That's his phone number, no.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Council. I'm signing off, but I appreciate it, I understand, you know, and I apologize for this kind of confusion, but we're doing the best we can. We got a lot of interim going on right now.
Okay, thank you very much, Steve.
Anyway.
All right.
Thank you.
Public hearing on the budget on the fiscal year tax classification is now closed. All right, moving on to public comment. We're now open for complete public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard in public comment? Do we have any hands on Zoom? No hands on Zoom in the audience? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of days ago, I was down at the center, and I was taking some photos, which I'll submit at another meeting. The photos are across the street from the complex that's being built at the CBS. The photos show the shadows that are imposed upon the businesses across the street. I talked to a few of the business owners, and they're dismayed. It's a, it's a good thing the shadows only last for about six months, because otherwise, I think you'll have a lot of depressed people down there, sitting in the darkness. I also want to talk about the center business district as a whole, and people down there feel that the complex being built, the 40-foot-tall complex, is detrimental to the immediate neighbors and the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed mid-rise apartments would increase traffic congestion, negatively impact health, would not promote safety from fire panic and other dangers, would not provide adequate light and air, as you just talked about, would create the overcrowding of land, and would create an undue concentration of population, and it would lower the value of land and buildings that surround it. Increased height, combined with the setbacks down there, would reduce privacy, natural light, and air movement, and create unsafe conditions for Winthrop first responders. Also... Well, that's enough of that. So now I have a different development that wants to be built in Winthrop. And there's some neighbors that are against the proposal, that's gone before the Board of Appeals. And the reason why they're against the proposals is because the project would be detrimental to the immediate neighbors and surrounding neighborhood. The proposed mid-rise apartments would increase traffic congestion, negatively impact health, would not promote safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, would not provide adequate light and air, would create overcrowding of land, would create an undue concentration of population, and would lower the value of land and the buildings that surround it.
Where is that, please?
I'm going to tell you.
What address are you talking about?
I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
The increased height, combined with the reduced setbacks, would reduce privacy, natural light, and air movement, and create an unsafe condition for Winthrop first responders. You might say it sounds similar, because the second property that I was describing is in Lankor, and people are against this project, even though, you know, it's good enough for the center area, but not for this other particular area. The person that wrote this is Chairman of the Planning Board, Robert Carroll. He's been on the planning board for a number of years. He was on the center redevelopment area, the passing of the plan.
Jack, we all know who Mr. Carroll is. You've had four minutes, so please finish right now.
Does this sound fair to you, that this person wants to overdevelop in an area that doesn't surround his house? He's been for the development of high-rise with no parking for 10 years. He's had a lot to say about the development down the center, imposing on the people in the center, but when it comes to a property near his house, he's steadfast against it.
Okay, all right.
And he has put in.
You're right about it, Jack. You're talking about personalities and people, and that's on the law. Yes, you are. You just said that, Chairman, it is doing something wrong, and you're criticizing him, and this is not the place to criticize people.
I'm just asking if you think it's fair to do this. You think it's fair to do this, thank you very much.
You're done, you're done. All right, is there anyone else on public comment? Anyone else? No hands? We will move on from public comment to correspondence. Denise Wood, uh do you have a correspondence other than uh people calling in on the different people for uh the school committee?
That's all I have, was just the school committee correspondence.
We have gotten uh probably fifty to sixty calls
Right.
uh on the election that's coming up in the next meeting for the school committee. But other than that, I I haven't seen any other correspondence except an anonymous one uh talking about uh an issue that's before the Board of Appeals. But of course, we have no direction over the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals is autonomous from us and uh we have no control over what they do. All right, moving forward, uh committee reports. Uh who's giving the Finance Committee report, Rich or Tracy?
Basically, the three uh items that were on our agenda were all tabled to the next meeting.
All right, but you did have a meeting, is that correct?
Yes, we had a meeting last night and uh myself, Counselor Honan, and uh Counselor uh Flotary were attended and also uh Counselor DeMarco and Meredith Hurley of the uh.
Okay, and um you got recommendation coming out under Old Business to table, is that correct? Okay, all right, Public Health and Safety Committee, you met as well?
Yes, we met uh at six o'clock this evening. Uh we had two items on the agenda, the first item was the National Grid uh proposal to uh move the wires and the poles that are in front of the Atlantis Marina on Pleasant Street to the opposite side of the street and down a little further um in order to enable the Atlantis Marina to complete construction on their building that's desperately needed. We had quite a contingent, I think half the residents came because they were concerned that we might deny this. However, we have, the committee voted approval to have this happen.
Okay.
And I spoke to Dan Cameron.
And that recommendation will be coming under Old Business, all right?
Asked Mr. Cameron to be sure that he removed the poles when the construction was done. Our second issue was the Fort Banks Access Road, which we've been in um several meetings about. And uh I sent out minutes with the um rough estimates of cost and time on each of the suggestions that have come up. Uh and another suggestion came up, Superintendent Howard came tonight and we discussed the possibility of buses. So we will look into that a little further. And uh Principal of the Fort Banks School, Mrs. Pearson, who is currently out on sick leave uh has been in touch with me by email and phone. And she is going to present uh the ideas that were in the minutes to her committee to discuss. So for the time being, we are tabling this issue and we'll bring it back at a future meeting.
And hopefully, this is an important issue, and hopefully we could use the op money to put a new road in because it is for infrastructure, so I I would hope that we look seriously at getting some of that op money for this project, whichever place you decide to put it. Okay, but moving forward, uh is there any other committee reports that moves and wants to meet, any other committees? None, okay. Uh moving on to the Town Manager Report, and as everyone knows, uh uh our interim Town Manager will be out for at least a a couple of days on grievance uh leave. And he has asked Meredith Hurley to take his place tonight, uh so Meredith?
Thank you, so um I'm mostly gonna give updates related to COVID and um that's really the breadth of my knowledge right now. Um so much like the rest of the country, we are seeing increases in COVID cases. We were, we were dropping through October, um so for example, the week of October twen- the last week of October, we had thirty new cases reported. Um the first week of November, we had twenty-four, and then the second week of Novem- November, we had fifteen. And then last week, the third week, we had thirty-three new cases, so we are, you know, we are seeing that. We're also seeing that come out with um with the MWRA testing that they do, they test for COVID in the wastewater. So we have seen the increase coming for about ten days now, ten to twelve days. So now we're seeing it kind of translate into case counts and things like that. Our percent positive on testing was at about um about two point three percent the um the first, the last week of October into the first week, so we're creeping a bit. I do expect for it to go up above three percent um in the next coming weeks. And then in terms of vaccines, Council President mentioned that we are doing a second dose clinic for the five to eleven-year-olds with Pfizer on December fourth down at the Senior Center. And also are encouraging, now that the Commonwealth has changed and has authorized boosters for anybody over the age of eighteen. So right now, anybody over the age of eighteen that has been vaccinated with Pfizer or Moderna within um more than six months is eligible for a a booster or within the last two months of Johnson and Johnson. So I've been using Vax Finder on the Massachusetts website, um the MassDoc Gov website, to send a lot of people to. We're con- we're looking at potentially doing local booster clinics. It's pretty difficult right now because of the subsequent holidays that we're bumping into and we're doing a lot of this with volunteer labor, so making sure that we're, you know, we have enough staff. I'm the only public health nurse for the town on staff, so kind of juggling all of that um can be difficult, so um also the end of this month, the Contact Tracing Collaborative, which has been supporting the Commonwealth in our contact tracing um has been, will be ending, so I can, we're gonna be unable to send any of our cases um to the state anymore. We're all gonna be doing it locally, it's gonna be, we anticipated being a pretty tough transition. Winthrop, Brevier, Chelsea, and Cambridge have formed um a collaborative through the North Suffolk Public Health Collaborative. So with that, we have hired a regional public health nurse and also they'll be hiring an epidemiologist through the city of Cambridge that's gonna help support all of this, so we're working on how do we then send cases to those positions so that they can help with the contact tracing, especially given, number one, the increases that we're starting to see and number two, you know, that we're all gonna be inside because of the cold weather, the holidays, socializing more, um so just watching that, um we meet probably two to three times a week to talk through those protocols and get those all solidified so that um here, I think, I really feel like we'll be fine because I have one or two amazing volunteers that still come in and help with contact tracing, um even with the surge. But I know that my counterparts in Brevier and Chelsea are really nervous about how their transition is gonna look because they haven't had as much direct contact with their contact tracers that we've had here, so um we met about that today. FKO is moving out of the space at the E.B. Newton Building at the end of December, so my office will be spreading into that space um to accommodate increased staff and things like that. And just to mention that Town Hall is closing tomorrow at noon.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, is that it?
That's it. Oh, you know, I did want to mention the vaccine, um our vaccine rates, cause I know that that's um, that that's important to people. So right now, um the thirty to forty-nine-year-olds are winning the race, shall we say? They're um ninety-two percent have at least their first dose and eighty-four percent um are fully vaccinated. They haven't started reporting the five to eleven-year-olds yet. Um twelve to fifteen-year-olds, seventy-three percent have at least their first dose. And the sixteen to nineteen-year-olds, um seventy-nine percent have at least their first dose, so um the group that is lagging still is the fifty to sixty-four-year-olds, they're at seventy-six percent um with one dose and seventy percent fully vaccinated, so there's a plethora of supply out there um for folks to get vaccinated, though.
What about the older group?
The older group is doing great, too, seventy-five and older is eighty-seven percent and then seventy-seven percent for fully vaccinated, see?
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Meredith? Go ahead, Rob.
Hey, Meredith, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, I apologize. But um I think this is a very important question to ask, as somebody who's a father of an eight and eleven-year-old. So me and my wife are are fully vaccinated. You know, and immediate members and within our family have already had COVID as well. I, I am, you know, I have no pro- I feel like I'm doing my duty by by getting vaccinated, I felt like I did what I should do. I'm nervous to get my eight and eleven-year-old vaccinated because I don't know the long-term effects. You know what I mean, so I I'm, I'm on the fence, you know what I mean? So like, what what would you say to, what would you say about that, like, like, cause I've seen like stories about like heart defects or like heart issues that come when.
Cardiomyopathy, like, there's a.
I I don't know what to do.
I, my biggest piece of advice is to find a trusted healthcare professional and ask them those questions. Most pediatricians, uh should be taking that time to have that conversation with their patients, quite frankly. I know that I took more time to find my pediatrician for my kids than I did to find my practitioner for myself. And I hold them to a higher standard than I do even for myself. I went into into finding a a pediatrician with the idea that I wanted to love this person, I really needed to, you know, and I'm a pediatric nurse, but I needed like a good, so I encourage anybody to have to talk through these points with their pediatrician or a nurse practitioner, or if it's somebody even in your family that you trust, their their medical knowledge, that's that's what I've been trying to send people to, because it is, you know, I totally appreciate the the um the concern.
I I I think there's probably a lot of parents like me who are thinking the same thing, yeah.
Oh, they absolutely are, mhm, they absolutely are.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Great question.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
One quick question, it it's probably a simple answer, is the surge the Delta COVID or is it the original?
The original, everything's Delta now. Yeah, everyth- we've moved past the Alpha and the Beta and we are just over ninety percent now. They're not even reporting the variant on our like variant reports as frequently anymore, so.
So COVID is COVID now, whether it's A, B, C, or D?
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Sure, E, F, G is probably coming.
I hope not. Okay, is that it? Nobody else has any questions? Thank you, Meredith, for filling in, uh Flotary, I appreciate it. Okay, a school committee report, the school committee met last night. We're in the middle of the uh MCAS re- uh review. We're taking the results and working the results of the MCAS and putting them together with uh the actual work that's being done in school beside the MCAS. And they're um moving forward. They they're trying to make sure that our kids are getting the best possible education. And they're using, uh the next three years' worth of COVID money is coming in bits and pieces. And they're using that money uh to bring up the achievement level of our students, uh from what they're learning from the MCAS. And once uh they're bringing up the the achievement level, they're also working on the health and safety and well-being. And that's what they're using, that COVID money that they're getting for. And as I said, they're getting money that's gonna last till, uh I think, twenty twenty-six, the money lasts. And they've, they're working out the plan on how to spend that and use it for those purposes of keeping it, people safe and their health and well-being, moving along uh with bringing up the achievement level of of every student in the class. Thanksgiving Day game is in two days, the pep rally, Father Thanksgiving Day game is tomorrow afternoon. The kids are having a half-day, so they'll be having a pep rally uh in the morning. And the Thanksgiving Day game is going to be in Revere. Also had uh learned that there was no, there still has been no COVID spread in the school. Over the last two-week period, there were two students that tested positive and one uh staff member. But other than those three, you know, they were kept safe and there was no spread. There were just three uh cases in two weeks, okay? That's the school committee report.
The Powder Puff game was last Saturday and the girls won twenty-five to nothing.
I'm sorry.
Powder Puff game was last Saturday.
Yes, and Winthrop won.
Twenty-five to nothing.
Yes. So we're already ahead of Revere going into Thursday's game, so let's win that one, too, go Vikings. And um that's gonna be a great game, I hope to get there to see my grandson play, as well as yours.
No, he doesn't play football, he's hard. I do not have any football players.
Okay. All right, moving on to Old Business. Uh the first item on Old Business is the National Grid Pleasant Street Project. And I understand there's a motion coming out of uh the Public Safety Committee to approve that, is that correct?
That's right, it was passed in the committee unanimously and we recommend it passing.
All right, motion's been made to approve the National Grid Pleasant Street Project. Uh it's coming out of committee with a favorable recommendation, therefore it does not need a second. Is there any discussion on it? In your package, you have the maps, uh the notices to all the neighbors and so on. Does anybody have any questions on it? Any, hearing none, all those in favor, I say aye when your name is called.
Counselor Aggero.
Yes.
Counselor Blockhart?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Prino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Okay, uh the next thing on the agenda is the Public Safety Building. Did you have any conversation in your committee on Public Safety Building?
No.
No, it was asked to be kept on the agenda, so we'll just keep it on the agenda until there is some action, till the next meeting. All right, the next item on Old Business is that Town Council vote to authorize the town of Winthrop to accept the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in the form of a grant awarded by the Massachusetts Public Department of Public Health, Bureau of Community Health and Prevention to be administered by the Win- Town of Winthrop's Public Health Department. This grant is for the Equitable Approaches to Public Safety Program or take any other action there, too. That is the motion, uh it went to committee, is there a recommendation out of committee?
Council President, uh the Finance Committee met uh last evening and we voted to table this till the next meeting.
All right, so there is a motion to table this coming out of Finance Committee. Since it's coming out of Finance Committee, it does not need a second, there were three members of the committee. The motion is to table this, is there any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Counselor Aggero?
Yes.
Counselor Blockhart?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Prino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
No. Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda is that the Town Council appropriate fifty thousand dollars from the sale of Town Property Fund to a special article for the purpose of real estate consulting services related to the sale of the old middle school property or take any other action there, too. This uh motion was sent to the Finance Committee last month, Finance Committee have a recommendation on this?
Finance Committee met last evening and uh we voted to table this motion till the next meeting.
Okay. A motion has been made to table this, um it does not need a second since it came out of committee and there's more than two people on the committee, is there any discussion on the motion to table? Yes, Counselor?
Could we just get a little more information as to what the discussion was surrounding this and what were some of the open questions?
We wanted more information also.
Yeah, no, just.
On on, you know, what this entailed.
Okay.
Uh the the packet that was presented, uh it did specify in our motion fifty thousand, but there was a lot of language for a lot more money that uh could possibly be uh needed in the future. So we just wanted to be able to discuss this a little bit more before we spent the money.
Okay.
It wasn't clear exactly what the fifty thousand would be spent on, if it would just be the first phase or cover all phases.
Okay, cool.
Okay, was this the McCollin, Amy? Okay, was this the McCollan Amy Real Estate proposal, this package? Okay, and that did have all the information we needed? Okay, all right, any other discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Blockhead?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Honin?
Yes.
Council Prino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. All right, moving on. Uh, the next item on all business is the Town Council adopt the amended assessors fees. Did you discuss that in Finance?
Yes, Council President, we, we did uh, discuss it and uh, Council made a, I mean, the Finance Committee made a recommendation to table it till the next meeting.
Okay. No, these are separate, these are fees, these assessors fees. You're tabling the, the physical year, but you don't have to table it because it's under new business.
The only three uh, issues we took up was the uh, was the tax rate and the other two motions that we already discussed.
Okay, so the Finance Committee didn't take up the assessors fees. Did the rules and ordinance, because fees go into rules and ordinance as well, is it true?
No, I don't believe we've, but we've taken that up, no.
Okay, so, I'm gonna send that back to a joint committee of Finance and Rules and Ordinance.
Uh, Council Christopher, uh, in our, in our joint meeting, I thought we had come to a, a consensus that we would go forward with that, that we would give a positive recommendation.
I thought we had passed the ones that we had met on already. If there are assessors fees that ha- uh, that we've addressed, I don't believe that we've taken that up as a joint committee yet, though. That would have to be done now.
I, I know that there were other fees done for the DPW.
Right.
And, and the building department.
I think we had, we, yes, we, I think we had one, we had a couple of questions around whether or not the um, the commercial rate for a municipal, for a lien or something was, was the same. And I don't think those have been answered yet. So, that's what, the only piece of information that we were waiting for. But we weren't under any time crunch as far as I understood, so that's probably why.
Council President, I, I believe we also had a question on, we're trying to raise the rate from a one to four family to match that of a five-plus family, right? Is that the?
He, he said it better than I did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We were trying to, there was a, a question as to raising the rate from a one to four family to match that of a five-plus multifamily. So that, we just wanted to know the information on the rationale behind that from.
Okay, so that never got answered, so.
And it's, it's, it's still in committee, I believe, joint committee.
It wasn't changed.
So, it's still in the joint committee, I hope we have it, ready for the next meeting?
It's still in joint committee, right.
All right, could you go to the chair, please?
Sorry, uh, it, the motion, as it's read, the memorandum says that the fourth, four family in commercial was not changed. So, there's no increase in that.
Exactly, so, if I go through the chair. The reason why we wanted to ask that question was that we saw that one was being increased and the other one wasn't. Uh, we wanted to make sure that what we were doing was uniform. So, we wanted to ask if there was any additional costs that were associated with a one-to-four family res- uh, complex as opposed to uh, other types. Because one was staying the same, the other one was going out. So, we just wanted clarification about that.
Okay, well, you heard from Steve Roach, the assessor, that he will be attending your next Finance Committee meetings. Please try to make it a joint meeting so you can do the fees at the same time and you'll have him in front of you, okay? And we can get that moved for the next meeting. I would appreciate it. Okay, under new business. All right, the first motion under new business is the Town Council appropriate consolidation of services from Town Council Personnel Line to Town Clerk's Personnel Line. And I am gonna send that to the Finance Committee? Okay? All right, so that will go to Finance. The second uh, item under new business is the Town Council vote to transfer five thousand dollars from the Town Council Reserve to the Town Manager's Supply Line. Uh, that is for employee recognition. Every Christmas, we have a small luncheon for our employees and recognize people that have retired that year. It's an ongoing thing that has been going on for years. Uh, and hopefully we can get this done. And I, I think we can put it over to the next meeting and you'll still have time to get it together. But it's for five thousand dollars, okay? So, I'm sending that as well to the uh.
Finance.
Finance Committee. Okay, um, even though it's, it's only five thousand, so I don't know if it really has to go there. But we'll send it. Uh, the other new business is uh, tax classification, Physically Year Twenty-Two. That's already been discussed. There is a motion to table it, but we don't need to do that. I am sending that to the Joint Committee. Since the Joint Committee is going to meet with the assessor on the fees, I, I would ask that the Joint Committee also both look at the, the tax classification for Physically Year Twenty-Two. And the final item on the um, agenda is the twenty twenty re-presenting map. And you, you have a proposal in your package showing uh, the new map that's coming out every ten years. They do a census, there's new information that comes out, the last one was two thousand and ten. Now, we have two thousand and twenty and it looks like the, some of the streets, two or three streets in different areas are moving either in from two to one or one to two and so on. I am gonna uh, send that to the Rules and Ordinance Committee to uh, so we can take it up at the next meeting, okay? All right, so moving on, uh, we're back to public comment. Is there anyone on uh, Zoom with a hand up? This is public comment, I see one hand went up.
Kurt Malar?
Kurt, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Kurt Malar Presing Two. Um, I'm just having a, a little bit of concern on following uh, what's going on with the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. Um, it, it, I guess I'm confused as to, uh, I did hear you still say that, that you don't oversee the Board of Appeals. But the issue lies that it seems like there's a little bit of loophole that people coming in with projects go directly to the Board of Appeals to get their special permitting to get things done. But when you look at the uh, Chapter seventeen, twelve, one thirty, Table Use Regulations, there really should be kind of a handshake going on with the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals for discussion on e- even zoning. So, just take the uh, uh, sixty-six Shore Drive. If you look at that, it's not zoned for mixed use, yet they're going in for a special permit to be mixed used there. So, it, it, it's concerning me. And then I started looking at the other listings on the Board of Appeals and it, it feels like somebody's caught on to a loophole that they don't have to go to the Planning Board for anything, they just go directly to the Board of Appeals. So, from a citizen's perspective, that's very concerning to me. Um, I just wanted to give that feedback from listening to the meetings and going back and forth. Um, it's a little troublesome to, to know.
Okay, thank, thank you, Kurt. There are certain special permits that go to the Planning Board and there are certain ones that go to the Appeals Board. I, I don't know that they, they both have to go on e- on uh, every one of the, I, I know that uh, like, we, when we did the overlay district and, and certain things like that, we made it specific that they went to the Planning Board for their special permits. But other special permits in the regular uh, course of business usually do go to the Appeals Board and not the Planning Board.
Yeah, so. Yeah, it's listed underneath the table. So, yeah, so there. Not confusing on that. Yes, I don't know uh, much about specifically um, what the provisions that you're talking about, Kurt. But eh, special permits generally will go, will be referred to in our ordinances to the Planning Board. So, the Senate Business District uh, Zone is one where that takes place. Y- y- your S D O D permits are one where that takes place. So, generally speaking, and it's not the case in all of the cases, but if you have, uh, if you're seeking relief under those provisions, under those as, in the CBD or an S D O D project, you will uh, ask for relief to the uh, to the, the Planning Board. Uh, if you're asking for relief in the means of a variance, then you will get that um, that relief through uh, through the, the Board of Appeals. Um, because they've denied, the, the, the Building Department has denied the uh, the permit because it's not in conformance with zoning. So, the special permit is sort of like a carve-out that we've made as a policy decision to say that the Planning Board is going to handle these things in these specific cases. The, the, the relief that's made available at the Appeals Board level is available no matter what when a permit, when an application has been denied. So, that's sort of the, the different ways that, that we've gone about it um, in our ordinances. And, and variances are available to, in, in any zone, uh, or any, any designation that we have in the town.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's what we said. Okay, anybody else on Zoom that has a hand up? No? Anybody else in the audience? Mr. Dodd, you have two minutes.
Well, that will make a total of about ten minutes, Phil, of uh, public comment. I don't think it's justified for you to be delving into someone else's time.
That's the rules.
There's only ten minutes of public comment at this meeting. There have been other meetings where it's gone longer, but ten, ten minutes, Phil, all right?
There are rules, you have two minutes.
Well, we'll take a moment. Concerning the uh, Planning Board. The last minutes, if anybody wants to know what's going on with the Planning Board, it's been discussed here with, with Mr. Malar, Mr. Christopher. Anybody wants to know what's going on with the Planning Board? You can check the uh, minutes of the Planning Board. The last minutes of the Planning Board were, well, May seventeenth of uh, two thousand twenty-one were the last minutes posted for the Planning Board. With that, Mr. Carroll noted that we need to get our minutes drafted and published more quickly. So, that was May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. So, what I'm suggesting after the first of the year, that there should be a lot of discussion about what the Planning Board does for this town, the decisions they make without posting minutes, not including uh, the public in their discussion. And especially uh, posting their minutes. How do we know what the Planning Board does? The last time they did something significant, how many more seconds do I have, Phil? The last time they did anything significant was they, they, they voted to put the Ingleside Park into the Senate Business District without posting any minutes about their discussions about doing that. Of course, you got to vote for it. But I'd like to take that up after the first of the year, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I see another hand up, is there a hand?
That's Kurt's.
No, that's Kurt.
No, that's the Kurt's hand, okay. Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, we will end public comment. And there's public relations. Uh, as I said, uh, the special senatorial election is uh, December fourteenth of twenty-one. But there are, our ballots are now in for the Democratic primary. So, anyone wishing to vote online or in person, come and see uh, the Clerk's Office and get your ballot. All right, and uh, also, we're having a Thanksgiving Day football game in Revere this year. And I hope to see a lot of you there rooting for Winthrop because that's our job to root for Winthrop always. So, let's keep rooting for Winthrop and everybody, please have a very happy, safe Thanksgiving. And this is a time to really, you know, give thanks for all we have. We have a wonderful town and we have wonderful people in it. And we should be thankful for everything that we do have. This is the day to do it. So, have a very happy, safe and healthy Thanksgiving. God bless you and I will entertain a motion to adjourn if no one else has anything there.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Council Prino, seconded by Council Honin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.